Good evening and welcome. My name is Peggy Angelo. I'm the PTA president, and we are honored to host this candidate debate. Thank you to all who are in attendance and watching from home, and thank you to our candidates, who are willing to serve our community and practice in our candidate forum. Tonight, we have Alice McNamara from the League of Women Voters of Westchester as our moderator. As a reminder, this is being livestreamed and will be replayed. You'll be able to watch it on the cable network, the school cable network, and on YouTube. I'm going to turn it over to Alice.
Okay, thank you. The League of Women Voters has been moderating candidates' forums for 100 years, and it's an honor to be here at Tuckahoe, and I'd like to thank the Tuckahoe PTA for inviting us in to do this. And as a reminder, the election day for school board and school budget is May 16th, and the polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There are four candidates for two seats on the Tuckahoe Board of Education. The candidates are Scott Bogetti, Peter Cassin, Julia Frascalito, and Lori Gerald. The order of speaking and answering questions was determined by lot prior to the start of the event. Each candidate will have one minute to deliver an opening statement. Each candidate will then have one and a half minutes to answer each question. Then each candidate will have one minute to deliver a closing statement, and the order will rotate with each question. Most of the questions were submitted by the public, and some are questions from the PTA. There is a timekeeper who will indicate to the candidates when there is 15 seconds remaining and when their time is up, and thank you to Allison Halloran for acting as timekeeper. Candidates may not interrupt one another, and no personal comments will be allowed. And I'm asking the audience, first of all, silence all your phones, and please hold all verbal comments and applause until the end of the forum. And for our first opening statement, we will start with Mr. Cassin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Cassin, and I am seeking a third and final term as a Board of Education trustee. I am extremely proud of what I, along with my fellow board members, have been able to accomplish over the past six years. I can confidently say that this district has improved significantly since my first day on the job, and I believe I have contributed a great deal to that progress. At the elementary school, reading and early intervention programs have vastly improved. At the middle school, high school, we have significantly expanded electives, APs, and clubs, built a world-class music program, and have finally begun incorporating real contemporary teaching and learning through initiatives such as Lattic. We are doing special education better at every level. SCL has been infused into just about everything we do, and this district is finally collecting and using individual student data in a real holistic manner. We have made immense improvements to our buildings and facilities with more on the way, made big upgrades to our security posture, and we are one of the few districts in the area to have brought back universal pre-K. All this while navigating a pandemic, which we did probably better than any school district in New York State. I am running on this record of success, and I am humbly requesting that this--
Excuse me, Mr. Cassin?
Yes. Okay.
I am Lori Gerald. I came into the district during one of the most challenging times in modern history, the COVID-19 pandemic, and I am happy about how we managed our district remaining open when many other nearby schools and districts were closed. In my first term as trustee, our school community has seen and experienced an improvement in all phases of operations. To bonds, the buildings and grounds have been upgraded to include, in addition to Cottle Elementary, updated security measures at all schools, new sports fields, updated infrastructure, a new lunchroom at the middle school and high school, and a new state-of-the-art middle and high school library. When I came here 12 years ago, I fiercely advocated student programs and quality education. I made the initial recommendation to the district to institute a strategic plan. I also advocated for teacher professional development, research-based, data-driven literacy instruction for early learners, anemic awareness and phonics foundations, UPK, Orton Gillingham Special Education, RTI programming.
Thank you.
Scott Bogetti, so before I get to my background, I'd like to point out my main focus for running for trustee. My main four focuses, if elected, will be special education, academic, social, emotional learning, and security for both buildings. I'm a second-generation graduate of the Tucko High School, graduated in 1995, my father in 1964, stepmother in 1967, and 20 cousins, aunts, and uncles, along with my two sisters have graduated from the district. My wife Kelly and I have four boys, all who attend Tucko schools, Logan in ninth, Mason in seventh, Harrison fourth, and my little Ashers in kindergarten. A little background about myself, I'm a former undercover narcotics agent in the Organized Crime Control Bureau. We can tell stories later. Last 18 years, a commercial office real estate leasing broker here in New York City, focusing on tech firms and financial firms. I currently serve as a chair and coach of the Tucko Youth Football Program for the past eight years, grades one through six, and the Tucko School Foundation for the last seven years, which is giving teacher grants and scholarships to our students. I also live on the back of the football field, so I can't hide from anyone. Look forward to working with you.
Good evening. Thank you, attendees, and the Tuckahoe PTA and League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. I would be honored to serve as your Board of Education trustee. If elected, it will be my goal to use my knowledge and experience to support the district to continue to improve and fulfill its mission of preparing every student for excellence. I have been a passionate and dedicated advocate for education and special education since high school, when I volunteered to co-teach students with autism religious education so that they would be included in the sacramental rites. I went on to become a special education attorney and have successfully worked with many school districts to obtain appropriate placements and programs for students with special needs. I assisted private schools with developing policy and advised on contractual, personnel, and student matters. I utilize a collaborative approach to foster cooperation. In my career, my strong work ethic, integrity, leadership, transparency, and ability to collaborate have brought me success, and I believe these characteristics will help me serve the district effectively and decisively. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first question will go first to Ms. Gerald. What is the main thing you hope to accomplish if you are elected to the school board?
I'm already seated. One of the things that I would like to continue to see through to fruition is for the data to come back on how our children are progressing in our early learning programs with the institution of our foundations program, as well as our Orton Gillingham programs, things that we have done to really improve the foundation of learning for our students. And I'm looking forward to seeing the long-term benefits of the improvement to our curriculum instruction, which I advocated for fiercely for up until I ran for the seat and since then. So that's a really big piece, so that our kids have a real good, strong foundation in learning.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
What is the main thing you hope to accomplish if you are elected to the school board?
So my main focus is going to be special ed. You know, being a former student in this high school and middle school and was diagnosed with ADHD at a later date is getting teachers more aware of how to deal with kids that have impulse behavior when it's really ADHD. You know, I want to see more teachers that are qualified and certified in Orton Gillingham training, right? Because it's not just being qualified or, sorry, certified, it's also infusing that into the classroom. You know, we have a reading specialist right now at the middle school and high school. She's doing phenomenal work with our students for multisensory reading support, and that starts in Cottle. And I think if we can duplicate her and bring her to Cottle, it will help the children, when they come to middle school, they're not on a reading level in third grade. You know, I know our teachers are Wilson-trained and some are Pfaff-trained, but again, I think the Orton Gillingham, as Lori just said, is very important, especially when it comes to infusing this learning. I'd also like to see the insecurity. We've done great jobs, sorry, we've done a great job. The board has done a great job with security for both schools, but I think we could improve the security, you know, in both buildings. There's a lack of certain aspects from an outsider looking in that I think we can improve, because our kids' safety is obviously at the forefront of all parents right now with, you know, the tragedies and mass shootings going on throughout other schools.
Thank you. One of the most important things I would like to do as a member of the board is to continue doing the good work that they're doing in expanding the special education program, ensuring that there's a special education continuum from grades K through 12 for the students with most significant needs, as well as those who would benefit from an accelerated program, ensuring that the diverse needs of learners are met, improving student outcomes, and designing equitable and learning opportunities based on achievement. The district has already done a good job of starting to collect data, so it's important that we continue to collect that data and review it. Professional learning is very important. I would like to ensure that teachers and staff are provided with professional development so that they can help the students, as well as the resources that they need to do so. Social and emotional learning is also very important, and the board has done a very good job of bringing in, at Cottle, for example, a guidance counselor who meets with the students, provides education, and also communicates with the parents. I think that was a wonderful addition, especially in light of all of the school shootings and things that have been happening. I have three children who all had three very different reactions to what happened, so I think it's important that they meet with the guidance counselor and that the information is also given to parents so that they know how to approach these issues when they do occur.
Mr. Cassin?
For me, it's taking a hard look at how we've progressed on our strategic plan. The strategic plan that we put in place back in 2019 was meant to be essentially a four-year plan or a three-year plan, ending in 2022. It got extended because of the COVID pandemic, so we were at really the end of that plan, and I think it's time to really take a look at how we've progressed, look at some metrics, see how we've done. I think it's going to be very, very good. I think we've made a lot of strides in each of the four pillars, put a lot of time, money, and sweat equity into that, and I believe we're going to pick our heads up and see that we did a very good job. But I think it's time to have that evaluation, see where we are, and then think about creating a new strategic plan. Some of those pillars may be extended, but I think it's time for that. It's time to look back and look forward and see how we did with the old plan and look ahead. Other thing for me, too, is just really seeing all the in-flight capital improvement projects to conclusion. We have our third board that just, I'm sorry, bond that just went through. It should be our final one for a while, I hope, and we're trying to still finish up the work from the second one, and now the new one's coming up. So really just seeing all that through and getting it all in on time and on budget is the other major accomplishment I'd like to achieve. Thank you.
Okay. The next question will go first to Mr. Bogetti. What are your thoughts on the current and proposed budget for the Tuckahoe School District?
So I got a copy of the budget last week for the projections of 2023 and '24. In my background, when I do financial analyses for companies taking office space, I kind of go line by line, and I must say, I give the board a lot of credit. I give Faith, our Business Administration Office, a lot of credit. This board is, the budget is very detailed. You know, it's tough to manage a school budget, right? Do I think we can allocate or diversify funds to certain other places? I do. I think we can allocate funds to more to special ed. You know, without transportation right now, transportation for special ed is a big part of our budget to the kids that have to go to BOSIs because of IPs or specialized schools. You know, that's north of, we'll call it $1.5 million. We have a $4 million special ed budget right now, proposed for 2023 and '24. I think we can allocate some more capital to that, because special ed is very, very important for the children of Tucko. It's one of the, I think one of the things we can improve a lot on. We've done great things, but I think we can do more. You know, I'm not going to get into salaries and busing and what we spend on that. You know, listen, this has to be, you have to dive deep, and it has to go line by line and figure out where we can cut back and where we could allocate more funds. But the board has done a great job. I know it's not an easy task from an outsider looking in, you know, kind of going through this and not, sorry.
Thank you. I support the budget. I think it is well-written, and it balances the needs of our diverse student body with the needs of taxpayers by keeping the budget under the tax cap. An investment in our schools is an investment in our community and in our property values. So I think the board did a very good job of considering everyone's needs in our community. Looking forward, I think, in preparing the budget for future years, things that I would like to look at are allocating more funds towards special education, adding more classes to the high school, more electives, and I think that's also takes, it's a very detailed process. We would have to review the budget and see where we could allocate those funds and save some money. Thank you.
Yes, well, having worked on the budget, I certainly am in favor of it, and I'm proud of it. I think it's a very good budget. For me, the things that I sort of focused in on and have focused in on is looking at the big picture of our financial, how we look financially overall in terms of reserves and in terms of how we, I really like to look strongly, always do, at what our tax levy is and how we can reduce that and reduce some of that tax burden on the taxpayer. And I'm very proud of this budget for that reason, because this year, the allowable tax revenue increase was over 4%. It was 4.94, actually, and we, as a board, you know, worked a lot with Faith and the administration to get that down to just 2.74. So that's about a $500,000 reduction in tax levy that we were allowed to ask for, that we're not asking for, yet we still are adding programs and a lot of good things towards our strategic goals in that budget. And we are also reducing our reliance on fund balance to balance the budget, which is something that I've been an advocate for since I've been on the board. And every year, in the last three or four years, we have been reducing that dependence on fund balance every single year. So that's kind of what I look at, and I'm proud of this budget for that reason. I like the fact that we are asking the community for less than we're allowed to and still putting a lot of good stuff in that budget.
He took all of my answers. So what I, I'm very proud of the budget. I think it is a very comprehensive budget, and it really speaks to our kids from pre-K all the way up to our senior year. I'm very proud of the progress we've made in special education. My goal is to prevent kids from going into special education programs from the beginning. And the way that we do that is having a comprehensive, strong elementary preschool program in place for our early learners. Part of the reasons why our children, some of our children, end up in special education is because of learning gaps, things that, little pieces that they've learned have not learned through the National Reading Panel, phonemic awareness, phonics, writing, being able to compose sentences. All of those things matter very early on so that we can prevent our students from coming into our special education program in the first place. Since we have had these additions to our curriculum, we are seeing less and less children being recommended to our special education program. Our special education program has progressed so well that we have people looking to pay tuition to come in here because we have a full continuum of a special ed program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next question will go first to Ms. Lido. A major role of a school board trustee is fiscal responsibility to the community. What training or knowledge do you have in terms of school finances?
I'm currently a special education attorney, and as an attorney, we always have to ensure that we're fiduciaries for our clients, that we keep their best interests in mind. So that is also making sure that we're advocating for them, whether, you know, the best interest would be going to litigation or collaborating with the other party. We have to do the work that we have to do to bring the matter forward, but we always balance that with how much it costs. So we do have, you know, a cost-benefit analysis with the work that we do to ensure that we're providing the best services for the least amount of money. So if I do have to inform my client that, you know, it would not be in their best interest to pursue litigation, even though we would make more money that way, I would tell them that that's not, that's not recommended, and I wouldn't force them to pursue it or recommend that they pursue it.
Well, I'm going to be fully transparent. I have no experience when it comes to a school budget, but I have plenty of experience in finance. Like I said, I--
Excuse--
I'm sorry, was I not next?
When did I turn?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
You can let him finish if you want. I don't care. Okay, okay. So for me, I don't have any specialized training in this area, but at this point now, I would say my six years on the board is my training, having gone through this process now for six years and having served on the Finance and Audit Committee in previous terms. That's really, really where I draw my experience from. So yeah, that's mostly it. You know, I've managed budgets and money from my profession, but really, in terms of school budgeting, that's where my education comes from. I rely heavily, obviously, on our experts. Faith Parks, right now, is our business leader. We rely quite a bit on her. We do have an auditing firm that does a hard look at our budget and our numbers every year, reports back to the board, so I rely a lot on that report to, you know, make decisions and review the budget. So yeah, that's it.
Likewise, I have experience now, having served as a board member now for my third year. Also, as a former teacher and educational, state education-level employee, I've also had experience in managing grant funding for multiple districts across the state, uh, state in New Jersey, and working with districts, in particular districts, who have issues around funding for quality education for their students and managing, helping them manage where that funding goes to support learning and growth. So my experience is, on the board, has been a little different than what I've done in my career, both as a teacher managing classroom budgets, helping my district manage school-wide budgets, and then also at the state level. This level allows me, and this position has allowed me to see it in a very different and comprehensive way, and then putting also my doctoral classes, that I've learned lots of great things, in about budgets into, really into fruition, into reality, and being able to apply that skill and those things that I've learned through my education and experience as an educator.
So again, I do commercial real estate in the city, and I lease office space to hedge funds, private equity, and tech firms, probably some of the smartest men and women in the city. And they rely on me to do full abstracts and how it affects their P and L by taking space when they have a $30 million obligation over the next 10 years. So I run these numbers for them, and it's very similar, I wouldn't say it's similar to a school budget, but it's detailed, right? And the main component of a school budget is asking questions. When we're presented as board trustees from Faith or from the superintendent, we have to ask questions about expenses. Why are we spending X on this? Why is the proposed budget going up on this? You know, I look at, you know, a reduction in special ed services over the last few years. You know, we're losing probably a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that's a line-by-line issue that I look at. You know, last board meeting, I was here, I got up and I said, you know, we have a reduction in $40,000 in BOSIs. Obviously, I'm reading the budget to see this, right? When I saw the BOSIs budget was cut for occupational education, you know, kids that want to go to trade schools, that's the first thing I noticed. So you have to be detail-oriented. You have to ask questions and hold people accountable on why we're spending what we're spending and why we're not spending what we're spending on programs that we need, such as special ed, such as more electives. So it's about paying attention.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, first to Mr. Cassin. Where would you like to see improvements made in the schools, faculty, buildings, budget, curriculum, climate?
Well, all of it. I want to see improvements everywhere. So, you know, an obvious one out of the gate, of course, is our buildings. So we, I know that, and the reason why we pursued this last bond is, this particular building, this particular high school, middle school building, needs a lot of infrastructure, 10 to 11 care. There's a lot going on here that's troubling. I know just recently with the past rainstorm we had, we actually had water in some of the classrooms. We have a lot of inefficiencies with our utilities due to leaking pipes and things of that nature. So this, this needs to be improved, and that's the reason why I went out and did that bond. But, you know, I have to get the work done and see it all the way, all the way through. Beyond that, I want to see us continue to make progress in the area of contemporary teaching and learning. It's been something that I've been focused on since I've been on this board, is trying to get more, more infusing more projects-based learning and teaching those soft skills that I think our kids are really going to need in the 21st century. It's begun to happen. It took a little time, but it's begun to happen now. This introduction to this Lattic program, which I mentioned in my, in my opening remarks, is a really good step in that direction, and we're moving towards this. I would like to see that, that keep going and that accelerate, actually. It's very, very important to me. Thank you.
Ms. Gerald?
What I would like to see happen is the continuation of the supporting of our curriculum and instruction improvements that we've made, professional development around the areas where we are deficient. I would also like to see our budget continue to support our teachers in preparing for next-level critical thinking skills. So by that, I mean making sure that we have AP programs that are available to our students, perhaps seeing if we can partner with, doing education in an innovative way, seeing if we can partner with agencies in and around our community to see if we can get some hands-on training for our students beyond an internship. Perhaps there's some, you know, back in my day, we had CHAF, and we had Home Mac, and we had different, you know, vocational programs in place at our schools. It would be nice if we could develop some relationships and partnerships within our budget that would support our kids who are maybe not college-bound. So those are some of the things that I would like to see added in this budget. So continued support for professional development for our teachers and support so that our kids are prepared for once they leave the school, whether it's college-bound. Oh, and also our AP and SAT preparation courses need to be extended as well in our budget.
This is more than a minute and a half. It's probably a 20-minute discussion, but I'll see if I can tie a couple of things in. Definitely academics. I think we can offer more when it comes to AP classes. Right now, we have, you know, AP Computer Science for 10th and 11th and 12th graders. I think the 10th graders deserve an extra AP class versus Computer Science. We have three AP classes for 11th grade and two for 12th. It's not enough. You know, to be competitive and to keep kids in this district for retention, it's crucial. Another idea that I came up with, and I thought it was, I kind of liked it, is to think about going to a nine-period day, and I'll tell you why. You keep the hours of the school the same, right? 7:30, 7:45 to 2:30, but that nine-period day, it gives a child that's in AIS, IAP, or Extra Help, a chance to take an elective that they never could before, right? That's advancement, right? So right now, that kid that has to go out for skills class or whatever it may be, can't take an elective and do things that the other kids that are doing. Secondly, it gives a child that wants rigor to take two electives or another AP class. And I know our teachers are under contract to 2025, I believe, so we have to wait some time to maybe get this done. I think the guidance department, right? The kids need better relationships, kids meeting high school students with our guidance department. They should be meeting, sorry.
Thank you. I would also like to improve all of these areas, but I'm going to focus on a few that I think are the most important. So one that is most important to me is curriculum. I would like to continue to improve the course offerings, increase electives for high school students, as well as AP options. At a recent board meeting that I attended, there was discussion of potentially bringing in the IB curriculum to the middle school, high school. I think that would be a wonderful addition, and I'd like to be a part of the implementation. It is a very rigorous program. It focuses on social, emotional learning. Students are required to learn a foreign language. I think that's wonderful. I think we should also ensure that there's a K to 12 curriculum. I think foreign language should be a part of the program at Cottle as well, so that students can start learning that and be ready when they get to middle school and high school. I would also like to see enhancements to the special ed program. The district is collecting data. It's important to continue collecting data and review that data to see if new programs should be added, if current programs should be removed, or if there should be other changes to help the students remain in the district and to attract other students with special needs from other districts. The students that are tuitioned in bring large funds to this district, so that would be great to have more of those students. Another thing that is important to me is-- Another thing that is important to me is safety. So it's important to continue reviewing our safety procedures and protocols and ensuring that there's one point of entry at each school and that persons who enter and leave are vetted. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next question first, the first person to answer the next question will be Ms. Gerald. COVID-19 has made significant impacts on our students' social-emotional development, which has affected our adolescents the most. How can we, as a school district, make improvements to the middle school guidance department and strategize a plan to provide our children with the skills they need to thrive?
I believe the district is already making strides in that area with the implementation of the Rethink Social and Emotional Program, using Common Language, checking in with our students. We've also had surveys done to check the wellness of our students and staff, both mentally and socially, and to see how they feel about their experience here and what we can do to support that. I also believe that with the institute, the implementation of the various foundational programs that we have, like foundations, like Orton-Gillingham, all of these things that we're already doing works to support the social and emotional well-being of our students. If they feel strong and confident in their abilities and the support that the staff and our school community gives them, then they will thrive and they will continue to grow. Listen, in the last few years, we've even risen in our rankings. I think we went from 31, maybe about four years ago, in our state standing, and we're now at 20. I think we're well on our way to making sure that we are doing right by our students in every manner, both academically as well as socially and emotionally.
Oh, sorry. So, you know, SEL is one of our four pillars, right? It's number one on the list. And I know Ms. Gerald just said rethink. I know the program. My feeling with rethink, it's more elementary-based. I don't think it's really geared for kids in middle school and high school. We used to use a program a few years ago, before Dr. Goodman came in. It was called Ruler, okay? And Ruler stands for Recognizing, Understand, Labeling, Expressing, and Regulating. This program comes from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and it's part of the Yale School of Medicine. Most of our administrators and teachers in the middle school and high school are trained in Ruler. I believe this program would be very beneficial to bring back to the kids of Tocco, especially middle school and high school, where social-emotional learning is a key, right? I have a son in middle school, and I can tell you I deal with this all the time. So I would make that suggestion as a board member, being that SEL is our number-one pillar, you know, besides diverse needs of learners. But if we can consider that, and if I was on the board, I would like to try to bring that back. Also, listen, we're doing great things with Maxwell right now, right? Maxwell in the middle school is another program we're using for the students. But again, I think when it comes to SEL, I'd like to give Ruler another try here in the district.
I think it's important to foster self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and positive relationships with all students. I think this can be done by having an open-door policy with the guidance counselors and the mental health professionals that are available at the district to speak to the students, letting them know, especially after what they've been through the past few years with COVID, school shootings, the swatting incident that affected our district, that they can talk about their feelings, they can express themselves, they can develop positive relationships with their peers, and they can also help each other get through these difficult situations. My youngest daughter came home and said that they had a lockdown drill. So she seems very unaffected by it because she's been dealing with this since she's born, pretty much. But my oldest has a very different reaction. So she's afraid, you know, she texts me, "Come get me, mommy." She's very afraid. So it's important that students who are having these reactions have somebody to go to at the school and that this should continue from K to 12. And I think the district is doing a good job of implementing the social-emotional learning throughout the district.
Yeah, I echo that and what Ms. Gerald said as well. We have done a lot in this area, something I'm very proud of in a lot of ways. Rethink is one of them, others as well. We've put in place an evidence-based health curriculum that is kind of more robust and tackles both physical and mental health as well, which has been really good. So I think we've done a lot in this area, but there's definitely more to do. I think a way to do more is really just more clubs and activities and giving our kids more of an outlet outside the classroom to do more things. And, you know, sports is great, and we have lots of sports, but I'm talking about even other types of things. And we've already started doing that. There was a debate team that was put in place in the middle school, and now this year coming up, it's going to be in the high school. I think stuff like that or programs and clubs like that are really good for that sort of balance that kids need to have an outlet. I'm also really happy and want to keep it going to see more class trips come back after COVID. For a while, we didn't have that, and that's come back in a big way this year. And I want to thank our teachers and staff for stepping up and doing that. But we can do more there. I think there's a lot more we can do in terms of getting our kids out of here on a day and getting them to see something new and expand their horizons. So lots been accomplished, but certainly more we can do. And I look more to the extracurricular and outside-the-classroom type opportunities to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question first to Mr. Bagetti. What are the four pillars of the strategic plan, and how do you plan to support each? Do you have a vision for the next edition of the strategic plan?
So the four pillars of the district are, one being SEL, the two being the diverse needs of learners, three being contemporary teaching and learning, and four being professional learning. You know, I just spoke about SEL. Another point that I'd like to bring up for SEL is, you know, I like to see the middle school kids, I'm sorry, the Cottle kids with the transition to middle school happen more than for one day for two hours. I don't think a child is ready to enter middle school when he's up and visiting the middle school for two hours one day. There needs to be more, we need to, listen, the school's down the block, the elementary school, and I think there needs to be more, more in line of, you know, communication between the middle school and Cottle to get our kids prepared for middle school. The vaping and alcohol substance abuse that we do with Maxwell, I think, is great. Social media bullying and in-person bullying, we have to take that on the head, right? We have to get ahead of this now. You know, there's technology out there, ChatGPT, and all these other different things that I hear that we need to have classes and get our teachers and administrators and parents up to speed on this. Diversity of learners, occupational learning, BOSIs, right? Not every kid's going to go to college. Plumbers, electricians, that's the foundation of what our country was built on, and we should put money back into that funding. Contemporary learning and teaching, right? Opportunities to learn outside of the school, more field trips. I want kids going to Manhattan to see culture, arts, museums.
Thank you.
The four pillars of the strategic plan are diverse needs of learners, professional learning, social and emotional learning, and contemporary teaching and learning. I support the district's plan to promote the diverse needs of learners. They're improving student outcomes and designing equitable and learning opportunities based on achievement data. I would like to continue doing this by offering more classes to diverse needs of learners. One set cohort of students that I feel has not been addressed are those with, who are considered gifted or would benefit from accelerated learning. I would like to see some more accelerated classes for those children. The district recently included an integrated co-teaching program at Cottle, which is excellent. It is basically in between the self-contained class and the collaborative team teaching that they used to offer. So now there's a place for those students who can benefit in a general ed classroom with more supports. Professional learning. In my career, I've participated in many conferences, provided continuing education classes, and I've also learned a lot. There are many different methodologies that address student needs. I would like to bring more of those into the district. With social-emotional learning, I would like to see an enhancement in that area, adding more guidance counselors, giving students more opportunities to voice their opinions as well as to receive advice on coping skills, et cetera. Thank you.
Mr. Cassin.
Right, so I guess to answer the question, I'll state them again because that was the question. Social-emotional learning, diverse needs of learners, contemporary teaching and learning, and professional learning are our four current goals. As far as going forward with the new plan and how I'd like to see that plan go, I do expect and would encourage that a lot of these goals get pushed forward, but not necessarily exactly the way they are. I think we can rethink them. For me, contemporary teaching and learning definitely needs to be continued on in a new plan. We kind of got a little bit of a late start on that. Well, you could say that the pandemic accelerated in some ways, but I think there's a lot more to do there. And to me, that's been my most important pillar in my mind, and I think there's more to do there. So I would like to see that moved forward. Professional learning, I also think we would want to have in a new strategic plan as well. That's something that I think is very, very important, and we've made a lot of progress in the last couple of years. But there's a lot more to do there. A lot of our teachers have been trained up in new reading programs, Wilson and Orton-Gillingham. And Latik was another good training that we sent our teachers through recently. But a lot more can go through that and need to go through that. But if we were going to come up with a new pillar, I'd like to see something along the lines of focusing more on teaching kids soft skills and citizenship and getting them to think, you know, beyond just academics. Thank you.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So the four pillars are SEL, diverse needs of learners, professional development, and also teaching and learning in a contemporary manner. Again, we are doing some of those things. We've begun to do it with our project-based learning time slots that we've implemented in the district, as well as the innovation labs that we have in place, our STEAM labs, our elementary school programs around STEAM. And we have a 3D printer now where kids are having an opportunity to explore what they can do even in, around technology. As far as professional development, we are doing a really good job of preparing our teachers for next-level teaching and learning for our students. We can do better. We can continue to support them. I'm not a person or an educator who believes it's a one-shot deal. It's a one-year situation in terms of professional development. We bring in a program, we do it a year, maybe you turn a kid the second year, okay, we're done, and now here's another program. I think that we have to be, continue to be very critical and purposeful in the programs that we implement and then supporting the teachers ongoing. And also outside of the curriculum, programs, field trips, those sorts of things, and social-emotional learning.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next question first to Ms. Lido. What issues do you believe our district needs to address in its academic programming? And do you have specific suggestions for improvement? What issues do you believe our district needs to address in its academic programming? Do you have specific suggestions for improvement?
Thank you. With regard to the academic program, I would like to see them implement a more rigorous academic program. Like I mentioned before, there was discussion of potentially bringing the IB program into the middle school and high school to try to make the Tocco Ho School District more competitive and attract other families from outside the district and to keep the families that are here in the district. There are a lot of students who, once they graduate Cottle, they go to a private school. I would like to see more electives offered at the middle school, high school, more rigorous classes. This way, students want to stay here and they can get into the top colleges.
Okay, Mr. Cassin.
Couple things come to mind here. So one for sure, I think we need to strengthen our math program, particularly in the high school, middle school and high school, I would say. I think that's an area that really can stand to be improved quite a bit. We've made huge strides in reading, particularly in the elementary school. I think now it's time to focus a little bit more on math in the upper levels. I think electives and APs is something we have to continue to try and increase in terms of options. We've done a lot there. We've added a lot in the last couple of years. An entrepreneurship class has been added, a statistics class has recently been added, AP Computer Science. So we've added quite a bit, but we've got to keep going on that because that is one of the challenges of a small school district, is offering our students a wide variety. Maybe start looking at other ways that we could deliver more, even if it's computer-based type classes, so that it's more flexible with students' schedules. One thing that I think is good to highlight, though, I mentioned math before. But one thing that I want to highlight is a good thing is that we have done a really good job of bridging math between the elementary school and the middle school. And the Envisions program that we put in place now does a better job of marrying those two together. So I definitely wanted to call that out. But yeah, those are the areas I think we need to focus on. Really more options for our kids in terms of APs and electives and strengthening our math classes. And I mentioned before, soft skills.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so one of the areas that I think we need improvement, I think we've done a really good job at the elementary school program. Work needs to continue. We shouldn't stop. But I do think that our middle school program should be stronger than what it is, definitely along the lines of math, but also in the line, in the area of student support. So we have an AIS. I'm not sure that it's the best structure for an AIS program. It has definitely been a complaint of mine. I mean, you have students coming in for support. How is it structured? How are the, how are students' needs being met? We've done that at the elementary school with the institution of a WIN program, what I need, where children are getting the help that's built into this schedule. They're not really missing out on anything, but their needs are being addressed in the program. I would love to see something more structured come into our middle school program around math and also around improvement in writing and reading. We know there's reciprocity in the ability of a student to read but also write. So improvement in both of those areas. As far as the AP and electives, I'm looking forward to us growing there. I would like to say, I'd like to highlight where we are strong. For the first time in about three or four years, we have students who are getting accepted to some of the top universities in our nation. So we're on our way.
Thank you, Mr. Bagetti.
Right, so I agree with Pete and Lori with the math program. I think, I do think we can do a lot better with math, but just one thing. When it comes to the reading support down in Cottle, I do believe we need another multisensory reading support in Cottle, like we have in the middle and high school. I'm a firm believer of that. You know, I talked about the nine-period day already. That was a suggestion of mine I like to look into with the board if elected. Listen, East Chester High School already does a nine-period day, so they've been doing this for a little while now. Both East Chester and Bronxville start their AP courses in ninth grade. We start in 10th, and the 10th grade class that we start is AP Computer Science. So I like to see more AP classes offered to younger students. I think our guidance department should be meeting with our students once a quarter. You know, we have a very small district, and we're very fortunate to have a district of our size. So when you have classes of 60 or 70 kids per class, the guidance counselors need to build the relationships with our students. Meeting once a quarter. How are you doing? What are you not doing well? What can you move forward in? Can you challenge yourself by taking an AP math, an AP physics class, or chemistry? We don't have AP English right now. We have AP English online, which I hope we can get here into the buildings soon. So I think the guidance department really needs to push our children and build better relationships with the kids. I'd also like to see.
Thank you. And the next question, we'll start with Mr. Cassin. Do you think Tocco Ho is currently meeting the needs of all students? Special ed, English language learners, and gifted students? If not, where should the focus be?
I definitely think in the area of gifted children, we're, that's an area we can improve on. I think there's been a lot of focus on special education and those that are falling behind, and that's obviously an important thing to do. But I think it's fair to say that we can do more in terms of challenging and. that we can do more in terms of challenging and giving our kids that are more gifted more appropriate levels of challenge. So I think that's definitely an area. Special education, I think, you know, that's something that always, I guess, could be improved, but I do feel like a lot has been done there. The integrated co-teach model at every grade in the elementary school is, to me, a huge step forward. But that's an area that you can always do a little bit better on, I guess. And then the other, in terms of English language learners, I think we provide a pretty good service there. So I think that's pretty well taken care of. So yeah, special education certainly could be improved in some areas, but I think having more, and it goes back to what we've been talking about before, about APs and electives and things of that nature, just providing more ability to challenge our more gifted kids, I think it's something we should be focusing on.
Yes, same. I feel the same way about making sure that we have innovative ways of reaching all students, not just our special education students, but also our students who are working above and beyond grade level. Having those supports for them is key to their development and social emotional health and wellbeing. We have integrated teaching models already in place. We do have our AP programs. I think where Pete actually touched on is our subgroups, our subgroups being our children who may not come from homes where English is the primary language spoken at home. I'm not so sure that we are doing our best there. I think that we can be doing more to make sure that all of our kids, including those who come from a home where the English is not spoken, that they're getting the supports. I've had an experience as an educator where a lot of times those ELL students end up being overlooked and somehow funneled into a special education program, not because that they have some sort of special challenge, but that they don't understand the language. And that's not okay. And I do think that we could be doing better. We have English language learners who come from Polish homes in our community. We have maybe some patois. We have some Hispanic and Asian. So Mandarin, I should have said. So we can do better there.
Can you repeat the question one more time for me, please?
Sure. Do you think Tocco Ho is currently meeting the needs of all students, special education, English language learners, and gifted students? If not, where should the focus be?
So no, I don't think we're meeting the needs of the special ed students here at Tocco. We could be doing a lot more for these children. And, you know, there's, it's funny, you know, I talk to a lot of parents in the district, probably 20 or 30 parents, and ask them all their concerns. And there's a lot. But, you know, one thing that really pointed out to me was, we have something called parent members for special ed. You know, these are parents who act as eyes and ears and support for new parents that are entering the IEP world. It's a scary world for new parents, right? You have a kid that needs special ed. The school should publicize more these parents, their names. Listen, they've been through tenure at this school from when their kids were in first grade to seniors, juniors, some of them may have graduated already. They could be the eyes and ears for a new parent coming into this IEP world. And again, we do it. I know it's given out in a packet with their names. They're underutilized, they're not, and they're not used to their ability, and they should be more publicized. As far as pushing kids, I think we can do, we can always do a lot more, right? I mentioned AP classes. I think internships should start in 11th grade. I think by the time you get to an internship in 12th grade, these kids are checked out. They're already thinking about Florida State and going down south and going to the beach. When you get to 11th grade, that's where you push a kid with an internship and try to get him out of the school.
Okay, thank you. I think the district has done a good job of bringing in additional special education supports and services. For example, in Cottle, we have the ICT program, Hegarty additional reading supports. However, I do think more can be done. I think the district should ensure that students who have a need have related services available to them, OT, PT, speech, whatever their needs are, they should be met. With regard to ESL, I think we could be doing more to ensure that families know what's going on in school as well as on a social level. I know there are some families, sometimes, you know, I check in, hey, is your child, did you sign up for strings or band? And they have no idea that the email even went out. So I think, you know, we should explore, how can we reach the families who have parents that are, you know, English is their second language. I think more can be done there. I also agree that more could be done with regard to the accelerated learners and gifted learners. Data should be taken to see, how many students do we have in a class who were not challenged by the program? Maybe that we should create a class for students like that so that they feel challenged. So I think these are, these are things that we can work on in the future, and this is something that I would like to do if I am elected to the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next question first, Ms. Gerald will be first to answer the next question. Based on publicly available information, the class sizes from Cottle to the high school seem to shrink by a factor of 25 to 30 percent. To what do you attribute this high rate of attrition at the middle and high school levels? Do you feel that this is a problem for the district? And if so, what ideas do you have to reduce the number of families electing to move their children to private schools or other districts?
Well, it's my understanding that we have improved in the area of retention in our district. We don't see as many students leaving as we have in the past when I was, you know, going back, you know, 11, 12 years ago. That's not what we're seeing. Those rates have definitely dropped. So that's a great improvement. I think that when we're meeting the needs of our students, parents want to stay. When we institute quality education programs, parents want their kids to stay. When we're meeting them, their needs socially and emotionally, parents will want their kids to stay. We are doing that already. We are doing it. Can we be better in many areas? Absolutely. But the work is being done. It was not when I first came here, our subgroups were, you know, expanding, learning gaps were expanding. We're seeing those gaps shrink now. So I want to give us credit where credit is due. Do we need improvement in some areas? Absolutely. One of the things that we are doing, because we are concerned about retention and making sure that parents want to stay, we have a lot of parents coming in because our special ed program has improved so greatly that people are paying for their kids to come here and get the quality education. We have a full continuum special education program, but for parents who leave, we do ask now. We started looking into retention and we interview families that leave, asking them, surveying them, and asking them why they are leaving and looking to those things to guide our next steps in planning and development.
Mr. Bagetti.
Yeah, well, to mention the fact of the paying to come into the school for the special ed, you know, if you look at the budget, it's, we're down from where we were. So I just to note that, we're not getting as many kids coming in for the special ed and we're losing revenue on that note. But listen, retention of students has always been a problem since I came here and I graduated in 1995, right? I think my graduating class, if I recall, had 56 kids, okay? You're not going to keep the legacy kids whose parents went to Fordham, whose parents went to Iona, or Holy Child, or whatever it may be. That's going to happen. You're going to lose those kids. We shouldn't be losing kids for academics, all right? I don't want a parent to come to me and say, you know what, I don't think the school has what it has to offer like Fordham and Iona does. That's not acceptable. I want from that parent to know what we're missing. What should we have, right? I want ideas from the community that other classes that I hear Fordham or Iona has. I think a lot of this right now, from what I'm hearing, especially having a son in middle school, and my kids are guilty of this, as all can be, and I tell them all the time. We need more handshaking in the middle school, high school. We need less fist bumping, okay? And we need, our students looking, our teachers in the eye and teaching them how to be young adults and get them prepared for that real world. Discipline is a problem, all right? I don't want the hoodies anymore. No more hats. I know we're not a private school, but that's not the real world. And I think if parents see this, they'll look at this like a Fordham or Iona. Secondly, there needs to be more administrative, administration and superintendent involvement with the middle school to show the good things that we're doing at Tocco, and we are doing amazing things at Tocco. And it needs to be well-known.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mentioned some of the things before that I think I would improve if I were on the board, including classes at the high school, more varied classes. I think that by doing this, we will improve the reputation of our school as a whole. If someone is searching for a home, and I noticed this myself, when we moved into the district, the schools were ranked, Cottle was a nine, the middle school was an eight, the high school was a seven. Now, when I look on grade schools, it's a five across the board. Why did this happen? So I think we should explore this because homeowners are looking at this and saying, you know, why did the, why did that reputation of the school go down over these five years since I've moved here? So I think looking at that and then adding classes, creating a robust academic program for students that people want to move into our district and stay here so that they can get into the best colleges, I think that's very important. I think we can also continue expanding the sports program. Recently, East Chester added flag football as a sport since it's been recognized. That's something we can look into. A lot of, I know my daughter was very excited when she finally could play flag football, and they're all excited to do that. It's something new. It also creates another social opportunity for students.
So I agree with a lot of what's been said already, but just to kind of pony up on a couple of it and add a few more. I do agree that to some extent, you are always going to lose a certain amount of students each year to legacy. And sports also sometimes is a draw, but we want to retain as many of our students as we can, particularly the students that are high academic achievers. And that's what in the past we've lost. And that's not great because then that makes, that gives our sort of entire profile a lesser look in terms of how we perform. So we need to retain those folks. And I think we have made a lot of progress in this area. And I feel like I'm saying it again, but it's important, it's been mentioned already, we have to offer more in terms of options and electives and APs and things of that nature. And then we also need to, I think, really, the best way in my mind to do this is to get better at how we deliver education in a more modern, contemporary way, so that this school does things differently, better differently, and has a parent say, wow, I really want my kid to go there. So doing more of that project-based learning, more robotics, more technology, more soft skill type of instruction where kids are learning how to speak in public and things of that nature, I think can really have parents think twice about taking their kid out of here and bringing them to a private school. If we are doing things in a more robust, kind of bold, different way, that's more in line with the future. I think that's really important. Schools are slow to change, so we should be ahead of it.
Okay, thank you. The next question first to Mr. Bagetti. What do you believe would make a successful balance of technology and hands-on learning in areas such as science?
Technology and science. Well, if you want to talk about technology, one thing that we don't have in this school is a parent technology committee. You know, we have committees for facilities advisory, we have a district wellness equity committee, a district safety committee, an audit finance committee. I'd like to start a technology committee. You know, our district is comprised of many parents who work at some of the biggest tech firms in the world, and they're right here in Manhattan. I'd like to comprise of a committee that's focused on any parent that wants to join with a couple of board members and superintendent, whoever, and tell us what, you know, what technology we should be using in the school, right? You know, there's programs like New Sella. I know one of the parents in our district works for New Sella, right? So there's things that we're missing, and there's things that we could bring on. You know, when you start talking to technology folks in certain companies, everyone kind of knows each other, and it becomes something where we can adapt different technology if we're not using it correctly. And that also ties into science with technology because that's the forefront of the future, right? And the way we have to shape our school is to be a technology leader. Thank you.
I think the district has made some great improvements with regard to technology. They've provided a STEAM lab at Cottle with the 3D printer. They provide hands-on learning in labs, and I think we can improve on this. More hands-on learning, consulting with experts in this area to see how could the students be learning, what could we bring into the classrooms, and what can we afford as a school district to bring into the classrooms? Because this technology is expensive. I also think that bringing more internship opportunities for the students so that they can see how the technology works in the real world would be great for them, especially in the middle school, high school.
Can I ask you to repeat the question one more time, though, just so I can make sure?
Sure, sure.
What do you believe would make a successful balance of technology and hands-on learning in areas such as science?
So, I mean, STEM is something that we're already doing very, very well, and I think that has to be continued to be built out and improved. That's the best way in my mind to infuse technology and hands-on learning is through the STEM program that we already have and expanding that. I think it's really just trying to find also more ways to integrate technology into the education. I know before was mentioned ChatGPT. AI is coming. Everyone knows it. It's here, basically. I think we should be embracing that. I think some of the mindset of educators is, oh, wow, how am I going to figure out if my students are cheating with ChatGPT? And I think it should be the opposite. I think we should be thinking about, how do we infuse technologies like ChatGPT into the classroom? And basically lean into it. Don't try and fight it. You're not going to fight it. It's not going away. So how do we, how do we teach kids how to use it in a constructive way and make it part of a class? So I think, thinking like that, thinking outside the box and looking to embrace technology rather than trying to fight it and infuse it into the instruction that we already give is the right approach.
I also think that project-based learning opportunities for children to share out in, through the venues that they are most comfortable with, is a really good way to experience a nice balance between technology and hands-on experience. Some kids really don't like technology. Some of them really don't, but maybe they're really good speakers. Maybe they are really good organizers. Maybe they bode well with bringing people together and being, you know, collaborative in their thinking and growing. I think that there are ways that we can balance the hands-on experiences through children, through our students, and within our STEAM program, which we already do have in place, and we can build upon that. And I think that one of the biggest things that I believe that we are working on and doing better at is really involving our children, our students, in their own learning, talking to them to find out what makes them tick, what they would be interested in, and seeing how we can come together and bridge and balance what the state is requiring us to do, what colleges and universities and vocational schools require us, for our children to have in place, and balancing that with what their interests are and asking them how they would like to balance technology and hands-on experience.
Okay, thank you. The next question first to Ms. Lido. Have you received any donations or endorsements from any groups? And if so, which groups?
No, I have not. I have not received any.
Okay, thank you.
That's a no for me as well.
No for me.
No.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Cassin, next question to you first. School shootings have sadly become all too common news events in our country. Do you believe that campus security needs to be improved? And if so, what ideas do you have to improve it?
An area always that needs to be reexamined and improved. Once again, an area, though, that I think we've improved quite a bit on, and I think I've been a part of that. You know, I come from a law enforcement background. I spent 22 years in the FBI, so it's something that I can relate to and think about quite a bit. So obviously, we've done a lot in terms of the structure of our buildings, creating security vestibules and things of that nature, and access control and all of that. And then, you know, I know in this new project coming up, there were some questions about the windows at the new Cottle cafeteria. We did take security very much into consideration there and provided some contingencies there. But yes, we can always get better there. I think cameras is something we need to upgrade. It's always surprising to me how our camera system is not, shouldn't be better, isn't better. It hasn't gotten better, but one of the aspects of this new capital bond is additional funding towards complete upgrade of all of our camera systems. I think that's very important. Not just, people think of cameras, you know, as a way to sort of see what happened in the past, but really, cameras are good to help monitor the entire campus during the day and make sure that our security professionals have a good, have a good viewpoint. So yes, lots to do there. The addition of the SRO, I think, was very, very important. But again, But again, you can always do better. I would say cameras and access control at the doors is probably the area I would look to, to improve even more. Thank you.
I was really actually want to say the same thing. We do within this bond, coming up, we do have some additions to our security features already in place. Security vestibules, we, with KG, I think it's KNG, our, the company that works with the design of our building, took into account some of the concerns, our concerns around security and, and the ability to like shoot through windows and that sort of thing. It's so sad that we even have to talk about this, but we have taken all of those things into account. I definitely think our camera system needs to, you know, constantly improve. And I think we need to keep our pulse on what's happening out in our communities, in our world today, and pivot when we need to pivot and look, and reevaluate our security systems often based on what is being presented in and around our state and community.
So just a correction, Altaris is our security consultant that the school uses. If I was elected, I think I would probably interview a few different firms to see what we're lacking security-wise, because you can't always just trust one firm. You need to take advice from a few different firms. And that's in anybody you interview, whether it's construction or whoever. My background, as you know, is law enforcement, undercover narcotics for the Organized Crime Control Bureau. So I have a lot of knowledge as well as Pete when it comes to security. We do have a lack of cameras in this school, specifically at first, second, third hallways, certain parts of the school. Part of the outside of the school is missing cameras. I'm not going to get into it for safety for the students and for people, you know, our, our children, obviously, but that's my number one focus. There should be no, nothing in the budget that stops to make sure the children and the teachers of this school are safe, okay? We talk about the bulletproof glass or preventative glass going into the, you know, the Cottle windows. What about all the Cottle kids that are exposed on those classroom windows up and down that road? It's a, they're very easy target. It's, it's scary. You have middle school classrooms on ground level. I don't know what's being done to protect those kids if there was an active shooter. We have six security guards, three retired in Cottle, three retired here. They are not armed. Why have retired cops from Eastchester in the building if they can't carry a gun? Most people aren't for guns. I'm not, but they're retired Eastchester police officers.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lido.
I think with regard to security, it's important to reexamine and continue improving it through security training, ongoing training, ensuring that windows and doors are secure, that there's one point of entry. So anyone who enters the building, they, they keep track of it. They know when they've entered and when they've left. Also, I think it's very important to speak to the students about security so that they're not accidentally or inadvertently opening the door to somebody that might knock. That can happen and it's very dangerous. So I think it's very important to be transparent with the students and discuss all of these things with them. As Scott was also saying, I think it's important to interview other firms regarding safety to see if there's something that we could, we could be doing better. Making sure that the doors that are not the point of entry are locked at all times as well as the windows. I know that at the middle school, there are windows on the ground level as well as Cottle. So I think it's important to ensure that the children in those classrooms are safe at all times.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Gerald. Would you be supportive of adding more clubs, trips, and extracurricular activities for students at all grade levels if it meant raising taxes?
Is that for me?
No.
I think that that would be something that we would need to go out to our school community with the survey and have them come in and have some forums to discuss. I don't think that, that is something that a board or school community do, can do or should do without the involvement and the voice, hearing the voices of our taxpayers. So that would be something that I think we would need to put into place before we really explore that. I am definitely open to having our students have field trips and, and those things, those experiences outside of our community. There's a whole big world out there. And I would love for them to have the opportunity to explore that world within the confines of our curriculum and instruction and how it ties back and, and how they can apply it into real-world experiences. So that's how I would handle that.
Ms. Bagetti?
Sure. Listen, I don't think we need to raise taxes to have more trips. You know, if I, when I look at this budget, and I've been studying it for a while, we can allocate funds for class trips. We have plenty of parent volunteers that would go on those trips along with some of our teachers, so the stipends don't have to be as high if we can get parent volunteers. You know, the middle school recently had a trip to Boston, which was the first in many years. My son, seventh grade, went on. There was an eighth grade trip to Boston. It was a huge success. The excitement in these children to leave the building, to go to another city was, I brought back my memories of when my trip went to Washington DC. We are 30 minutes away from the most diverse cultural city in the world. It's called New York City, right? Our kids, ninth grade, 10th grade, they can get on a train and have a day at Carnegie Hall listening to music, how music and where it comes from. They can go to cultural arts centers. They can go to museums. You know, if they're learning a lesson that, you know, that eighth grade, maybe they're learning something. It's a lesson that they can go to a museum and actually visually now see it. We should be supporting this 110%.
I wholeheartedly support the addition of clubs, trips, and extracurricular activities at all levels at the district. I believe that it enhances the student's education and there are creative ways of funding each so that the taxpayers would be minimally affected. There are very involved parents in this district who would volunteer, you know, provide, open up a club. They'd be willing to do it if it's possible for class trips. Oftentimes, parents would pay for that if it's an option. I think many parents would be willing to contribute to payment for a class trip because of the way it enhances the student's education. It, not only is it fun and allows a social opportunity, but the students are learning outside of the classroom. And then they're bringing that, what they learned back in the classroom. They're having discussions. They're learning real world, world things when they're out in the world. They're learning how to take a train, how, how to speak to somebody, how, how to pay for something. There's many, many good things that come out of having these class trips. Clubs can enhance their education as well. So for example, my children participated in the diversity club. They had an amazing experience. They learned about various cultures. They've become more worldly. They understand and they know more about the children that they're sitting next to in the classroom. So I'd like to see more of that as well as extracurriculars. I think that, that only benefit can come from varying our extracurriculars to give all students a voice. Thank you.
Obviously I'm for the expansion of club trips and extracurricular activities, as we said before. I, I don't think that the budget or, or, or tax dollars is really an impediment here. There, there's plenty of money in the budget to, to support these activities. They don't tend to be all that high cost. And that's not, I don't believe, the barrier that we're facing in, in adding these things. We have been adding quite a bit, but I don't think that's, it's not really a course-driven thing. It's, it's more about, you know, logistics and volunteerism and, and, and getting the support from within, which, which we have been getting. And in terms of class trips, I know our, our community and our parents are, are even probably willing to hear in there, you know, contribute on, on a class by class, on a trip by trip basis. So I don't, I don't see budgetary or, or tax dollars being an impediment here. I think we, we can expand those with, with the existing budget easily.
Okay, thank you. The next question first to Mr. Bagetti. Recent headlines from other parts of the country have described controversy on some school boards over issues like book banning, critical race theory, LGBTQ, DEI, and other topics that have become politically polarizing. Where, where do you stand on these issues? Is there anything in our district that you believe should be banned or stopped?
I, I'm not going to bring politics into school, okay? Tocco, Tocco was built on diversity from when my dad graduated in 1964 to when I graduated here in 1995. And that's what makes our community so special. You know, my parents chose Tocco because of diversity. We had the opportunity to move to, when we left Mount Vernon to, my mother said, you know what? We're going back to Tocco where your dad's from because that's the community I want to raise you in. So listen, as a board member, I hope, potentially, who knows? But you know, that's something, that's a, that's a complete board discussion with the superintendent, director of curriculum. That's something that I don't think should be addressed this evening because it's a very, it's a very difficult topic to approach on a public forum. A lot of thought goes into it, but diversity in education, of course. We can, we can, we can educate without books to be diverse, right? And I don't think Tocco has that problem. Again, more cultural experiences outside of the school, to me, probably enhances more than a, than a textbook. That's my opinion. But again, again, I think this is an opinion of the community, taking surveys and hearing from the Board of Ed as a team, that superintendent, and of course, our director of curriculum and teachers. And as a whole, that's when a decision is made.
I think the district has done a, a great job with regard to diversity and inclusion. For example, some of the things that were done, the PTA donated colors to the art program so that students could see themselves and, and, you know, use other colors than just, you know, the peach and brown. They're included in the standard crayon box. There's a whole palette of shades. Another thing is there are more books with diverse authors and diverse cultures that teach the students about things that they may, may not even be aware of, and it's great. So we've also, as parents, as class parents, we're trying to enhance the program and create more opportunities within the classroom so that students can learn about each other and diverse cultures. So I think we are doing a great job. There's nothing that I can think of that I would ban at this district. But I think it's important to keep reviewing our programs, having discussions with the superintendents, getting feedback, having the superintendent get feedback from the teachers and staff to see what is required and, and what people, what the students and the parents want so that we can continue to meet those needs and make sure that everyone in the district feels like they have a voice.
Could you repeat the question again, one more time, please?
Sure. Recent headlines from other parts of the country have described controversy on some school boards over issues like book banning, critical race theory, LGBTQ, DEI, and other topics that have become politically polarizing. If elected, where do you stand on these issues? Is there anything in our district that you believe should be banned or stopped?
So yeah, very, very sort of nuanced topic and, and a hot topic, I would say. Look, I, I think I'm very proud of, of our district and our community. I, I don't think this is really an issue here in terms of, you know, we, we have a lot of diversity and I, and I think we do it well. That's been evident by, you know, just recently, I think Ms. Gerald mentioned before, we have done some climate surveys in the last two years. And everything that we've seen from those surveys say that our kids feel they're in a place where they feel they belong, they feel they're safe, they feel that they're included. And that's really what matters. I, I, I mean, I'll be very blunt when you say CRT, which is kind of not really a very well-defined thing. But in terms of, I, I'm not for, and I would be against, any sort of curriculum instruction that focused on dividing our children or focused on things like privilege or victimology or anything like that. That, I'm, I'm not for that at all. I think that's moving in the, in the wrong direction. That's not to say that we don't recognize inequalities and, and things that have happened in the past. We certainly do. But I think it's, it's about moving forward. I, my emphasis for me is making sure that everything we're doing is, is about being inclusive. And I think we need to, we need not to be so binary about this discussion, about this, about this issue. People tend to go the one side or the other. I think it's important to, to be open-minded and really focus on making all kids feel comfortable regardless of their background and, and safe.
Thank you.
That's my focus.
Thank you. Ms. Gerald?
Yes, I, I think that we have really come a long way in most of these areas. I believe that we are a school community who embraces all people and ethnic experiences. I'm one for our students having diversity and, and diverse experiences and have, building relationships with people. That's how we overcome areas that divide us. I'm the one who years ago brought the idea that we needed to have a diversity committee, a diversity program, a diversity engagement with our, with our students. That program was instituted. It's now evolved to whatever it is now. And I think that those are great ways to celebrate our differences and highlight our commonalities. And I think that our district with respect to our leadership, our administrators and our teachers, for the most part, are making sure that we are making our children, not only, not only can we say that we're diverse, but we're making our students who don't look like other people feel that they are a part. And so that's why we have climate surveys to keep our fingers in our, in our, on the pulse of where our kids are in that area.
Okay, um, okay, thank you. The next question first to Ms. Lido. Excuse me. What is the current board lacking and how could, excuse me, and how can you improve upon or change it?
Thank you. I just want to say I think the current board is doing an excellent job of using innovative ideas and improving the district. The one thing I, I think is lacking is a parent who has students at Cottle and represents the, the younger students in the district. So I think that's something that I could bring to the board. By the time, if I am elected, by the time my term is up, I will have a student in each school in the district. So I'll be fully aware of what's going on. I'll be completely invested. So I think that I can help bring great ideas to the board on how to improve, how to meet students' needs, what the parents are looking for, and what may be lacking in the programs.
Okay, Mr. Cassin?
The current board is perfect. No, we do have a, we do have a really good board that works very, very well together. And it's a very, very collaborative environment, so I'm very proud of that. I will say the area where I think we've fallen short of late and I would like to improve if I'm lucky enough to stay on is how well, how, the lack of communication, I think, or doing better communication is a better way, I could say it. Better communication internal to the school with our stakeholders. I think we do a very good job as a board of making ourselves accessible to the community and communicating well with the community. But I think over the last two or three years, we have allowed, and I'll take responsibility for this as the board president, we have allowed ourselves to become a little bit siloed with regard to communications with our stakeholders within the school. I think that was done maybe in a little bit of a overcompensation for maybe in the past, some, some folks feeling at the board in some areas was not, you know, sort of staying in its lane. I don't necessarily agree with that, but I know that was some, some of the, some of the accusation. And I think in an effort with the new superintendent, who is, who is very good at board relations, to sort of keep that in line, we may have overcompensated a little bit too much. And I think if I'm lucky enough to stay on, I would definitely look in my next term to improve that, get back to doing regular periodic meetings and sit downs with different stakeholders in the school. That's an area we definitely can go back and improve.
So Cottle is represented with me as I am a former and actually still am an elementary school teacher, mother of three, and have my doctorate in education. So Cottle is represented with my seat. I'm always fighting for those little babies, always have, always will. And also the middle school and high school are represented by all of us. And I support our teachers. I've got many letters over the years from the teaching staff thanking me for advocating for them. I do care about our teachers. I do bring up our teachers. I'm definitely concerned always about their wellbeing. I think at a recent, in fact, at a recent board meeting, I, I did inquire about the, the, how the, the climate and culture was with the, how the, the climate and culture was within our teachers. Are they feeling overwhelmed? Are they feeling supported? So those are definitely areas that I'm definitely in tune with, and I do inquire, and I do whatever I can to support both our students, our community members, and our teachers. Without them, we, we're not going to get very far. And, and not only our teachers, but our support staff.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm not going to say what the board's lacking, that's, that's not fair. I think they're doing, they're doing a great job. I think what, to Julia's point, what some of the lacking is, the fact that I have a child in every part of this school, high school, middle school, two in Cottle. So I am on the ground with those parents and those teachers. I can hear those parents' complaints, I can hear their positive things, which I, hopefully I hear more than complaints, right? And also speaking to the teachers, you know, on what they're missing. You know, to Pete's point on the silo communication, I think we do need to create strategic partnerships with the stakeholders. I think that needs to be, you know, that needs to get better. You know, also representing the taxpayers who don't have children in this school, our seniors, right? That was brought up to me the other day from my neighbor, who's a, you know, senior citizen, has no kid in the school, he's like, hey, I don't want to get banged over the head for $40,000 in taxes, and, you know, you're going to have that. Accountability, I think that's important. I think we need, as a board, to do a better job of hold people accountable in this school, administrators and teachers. There's been a lack of that for many years, and I think we need to go stronger on that. And I think we need to provide that link between the community and school with advocacy and transparency. And by me having that line to all those parents, that provides that link.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next, the next question first to Mr. Kasson. There's been recent discussion about the district moving to the international baccalaureate system. Do you support this and what are your plans of action? And, excuse me, and what, what would be your plans of action should it move forward?
I, I certainly support it. I think it's a very exciting program, and I think we're lucky to have our new middle school, high school principal, who's, who's going to be coming in next year, actually has some experience with implementing this program. So I think we should leverage that when, when he gets here, and I think we should look to, to, to see if we can put it in place. And, and I think it's worth supporting. I'm not quite sure really what, what the financial price tag is on that, but whatever it is, I think we should support it. I think it, it goes back to a lot of what we've been talking about tonight, from a lot of different ways, which is just really trying to broaden our kids' horizons and giving them different exposure to different things, and getting them to be more culturally diverse and enriched, and that program does that. So I am very much in favor, and I think it's an exciting program, and I think it does a lot to excel our sort of level academics, and it goes also back to the point about being more attractive to, to, to parents at the high school level who would think about taking their kids elsewhere. So very much supportive of it, and I think we're fortunate to have a, a, a principal coming in that actually has experience with this program. We should leverage that, and we should, we should try and get it in place.
Agreed. I absolutely agree with all of that. We did discuss it at a board meeting recently about the IB program, and we've actually talked, actually brought it up quite a few times. It is a very expensive program, so that would have to be something that is explored. Perhaps that could be when we revisit our strategic plan, perhaps that's something that could be considered in the development of a new strategic plan, which we will be working on, I'm sure, soon, so that we can hopefully, at some point, implement the program here within Tuckahoe. Now, the principal, who will be coming, the new principal, brings a wealth of experience, certified in the program, has had worked with students within the program, brings that skill and knowledge that we can all learn from. He mentioned that he looked forward to perhaps implementing whatever parts or elements of the program into our current system without the funding to back it up for the time being. So that's really a great start. We can leverage his experience and bring in elements to it, of the program into, integrate it into our system, and then hopefully, when we look at our new strategic plan, maybe that's something we can explore to actually bring in and benefit some students.
Yeah, I, I agree with Lori and Pete. You know, I'm in favor of this, and I think it, it's going to help broaden our kids. And I think, you know, if we, if we can financially support it, again, that's going back to the budget, line by line, and see where we can allocate funds, and if it's not a monster price tag, you know, I'm in favor for it. And I think, obviously, we have to support the middle school, high school principal coming in. You know, if he has experience in this, you know, this would be one of the first things that we should implement, and, you know, to support him in anything he wants to, you know, try new to endeavor, because it's, you know, having someone new is always good, no matter where you go. And, you know, new ideas, new approach, you know, new type of learning, it makes everyone smarter, and it broadens, it broadens, it broadens the teachers' skills and our children's skills, so I'm, I'm all in favor.
IB is a rigorous curriculum that focuses on expanding students' global knowledge to foster empathy and understanding of different cultures and practices. Foreign language is mandatory. I think it's a great initiative, and I would support it. However, I think they're also, and we have to be fiscally responsible in implementing it and ensuring, keeping in mind the taxpayers, those who do not have children in the district, and trying to see how we can bring that in and balancing the needs of all people in our community. Also, another thing that I think this would call into question is, how do we prepare the youngest learners for this program? Are they just going into middle school and having to learn foreign language for the first time, or is there a way that we can introduce it a little bit earlier in elementary school so that they already have this knowledge and they can become fluent in that language and have proficiency? I think these are all important things that we have to consider, and when the strategic, when it comes time to develop the new strategic plan in 2024, I think these are all things that we can include. Starting a foreign language early will lead to higher success rates on tests like the SAT, it will give students an opportunity to become fluent. I studied foreign language since first grade, and I, it definitely helped me understand root words, cultures, and practices. Foreign language classes would be a great addition throughout the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question first to Ms. Gerald. What is the biggest challenge facing the Tuckahoe School District, and what is the district's greatest strength?
Sorry, taking my notes. I think that one of the biggest challenges of our school district is really one of the gifts that we have. It's a challenge, both a challenge and a, and a plus, is that we're a small district. We only have, you know, two, two buildings. The middle and high school are in the same building we're sitting in, even the district offices. So with that said, it has been a challenge to bring in a lot of the program that we would like to expand our AP courses and electives. We're doing a good job with that, we have more work to do, but it is very challenging to do that, and finding quality candidates with certification in some of those areas. Science and math in particular, it's, it's difficult to find people who can come in and who are excellent at teaching it. And so I think that that is a big challenge for us. Being both a small district is a plus, because it's really, we really have a school community. Everyone tends to know everyone else, and that makes it good. It makes it so that we're approachable, you can call, you know, your neighbor and say, this is what we're doing, what do you think about this? And I definitely get those kind of stops when I'm in CVS or the grocery store, and having conversations with our stakeholders within our community. So it's a plus that we're big, but it's also can be a little bit challenging, and I think we can do better in our areas of focus.
Mr. Bagetti?
Yeah, and I'm going to piggyback off that. I, I do agree with Lori. I think the challenge is being the small district with a small budget, right? We're not the large city schools, we're not a school that, you know, has a, has a fiscal balance that can go on and on. So to deliver the courses, to hire the teachers, you know, to give the electives that we need for our children to succeed is tough, it's a challenge. And that goes with being fiscally responsible, and how we could diversify funds to make up for being a small district. You know, Tuckahoe's been doing this for years as a small district, and we've always overcome, right? It's, you know, kind of my slogan, that winning is believing, right, at Tuckahoe. You know, the strength of our district, the number one strength is our community. I think pound for pound, Tuckahoe has the best community in Westchester County, and I know a lot of my friends live in other districts, and they always say, oh my God, your school, the spirit, the children, the kids, the parents, no one has what we have in this district. Whether you live in the Village, Chester Heights, Bronxville Manor, we are one, and that's something that can't be duplicated. We will figure out the challenges of how to increase this budget, how to bring more curriculum in, how to advance our children. That's the board's job with the superintendent and the principal. And I can guarantee you, we will get there, and we'll try to do our best to bring these courses in for our kids.
I agree with Scott and Lori. I think having, being a small district with a small budget is the biggest challenge, because we do have lofty goals. We would like to add classes to the high school, make the program more rigorous, but how do we do this in a fiscally responsible way, managing the budget that we have? So I think these are all the questions that the board will have to answer going forward, and I think in line with this is, how do we meet the needs of the diverse learners on this budget? How do we provide programs for every student so that no one falls through the cracks? I think that's also very important, you know, not, not using a cookie cutter approach, because that's all that we can afford, but really diversifying the instruction for every student. And I think the greatest strength that we have are, like Scott said, our community. We have an amazing community, we have supportive parents, we have parents who are willing to do anything for their students to enhance their education. We also have wonderful teachers, dedicated teachers. I think that's, that's another strength that we have here. The teachers really go above and beyond for the students, they communicate with the parents, they differentiate the instruction within the classroom, so that within the general education classroom, they're able to reach each and every student, and I think that's commendable.
For strengths, some of them have said, but I'll repeat them, size, size is definitely both a strength and a weakness, I agree with that. Our, our small size gives us a lot of opportunities to provide more focused instruction and SCL, and, and also is conducive to project-based learning, but of course, our size becomes sometimes a challenge with getting class sizes and getting more electives and APs in. Our teachers are certainly a strength. We have some of the best teachers in Westchester County, in the state, probably in the country, so our teachers are certainly a strength. I agree with Scott, our community is a, is a tremendous strength. We have a very strong, very supportive, diverse community, it's a massive strength. Couple others come to mind, our music program, people forget about that. We have probably the best music program now, it's kind of snuck up on everybody in the last couple of years than, really anywhere around, it's a phenomenal music program. And one thing that has become a recent strength of ours that may not be known as well, is we've become a very, very good data-centric school district. And this is something that's recent, but we're doing a really good job now, I think, of really collecting and analyzing data on our children holistically. So that's, that's one. And going back to the community, so I think a really good example of how, of our strengths is how we navigated COVID, and that was a, that was a, a, a all-around thing. Challenges, also, budget. Budget's a challenge, because we are a small district, we have a small budget, so, and I, I would add to that also, budget and trying to keep the tax levy down on our, our community members, which has gotten high.
Okay, thank you. And we have one final question, and the question will go first to Mr. Bagetti. How do you plan to improve the quality and experience of Tuckahoe schools for both the kids and the teachers?
Well, for the teachers, I'd like to see, listen, morale in the building right now is probably not at the all-time high that it should be. So I think for the teachers, to improve their quality is to bring morale up, and to bring morale up, that requires town hall meetings, you know, teachers should be in town hall settings, just like corporations do, right? To learn, observe, hear the gripes, what's bothering the teachers right now, and the administration, superintendent, teachers' union needs to get involved to get morale up off the, to get morale better in the building. You know, listen, off-site events, right, collaborating, right, that's, that's huge, you know, to leave the school district, to get teachers to go to off-site, you know, team-building events, that's, that's a big, that's a big win. Parent involvement, right? We love parent involvement, we want parents' input, teachers need that, you know, they thrive off of it, you know, how, what, you know, what could we be doing better? What are we missing? What are we doing right? You know, I want parents to go to, and you say, oh my God, you're, my son learned so much, he, thank, I can't believe what... Teachers also need, they need a pat on the back, right, just like an employee at a corporation does. Sorry, I missed the second part of that question, I have two seconds left, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Was there another part to that question?
No.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Improve your quality and experience. That's, okay.
I think one way to improve quality for kids and teachers is to provide professional development, ensure that teachers have the resources that they need in order to teach the students and have happy students that are behaving in the classroom. Helping them with training, for example, for behavioral, any behavioral issues that, that might come up. They can be trained to prevent these behaviors from becoming an issue in the classroom, providing antecedent behavior consequence charts, that's like something that they would do for ABA, but it benefits everyone. So this type of training could help the teachers, if more effectively, train their students. I think strong leadership is extremely important. We have some great leaders at our school, and we're going to get a, a new leader at the middle school, high school. A good leader fosters open communication and welcomes questions, ideas, and critical thinking. I think it's important to understand what the teachers have to say and what they need. I think it's important to have the teachers feel heard and ensure their needs are met, whether it's adding supports and services in the form of technology or instructional instruments within a classroom or additional staff. Understanding issues that may arise in each school and taking steps to address them so that the burden does not fall upon one particular administrator or staff member. It's important to set expectations, create a workable plan, a system of accountability, and also to celebrate their successes. I believe having a workable plan with realistic expectations in place will build morale and lead to happy and confident staff who want to come into work every day, as well as happy students.
Thank you. Mr. Kasson?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
Sure. How do you plan to improve the quality and experience of Tuckahoe schools for both our kids and our teachers?
So, I guess I'll start with, with teachers first. I mentioned it before, so I'll mention it again, I think, you know, better communication and, and more collaboration between the board and, and staff, I think would, may, may go a long way in figuring out how we can do that better. So I think that's, that's one way. More professional development, I think, is, is a way that we show that we're supporting our teachers and staff. Something we've been doing of late, but we got to keep going with that, it's very important. It, it benefits teachers and staff, and it benefits our kids, obviously. So that's, that's one area where I think we got to keep, keep at it at, is, is professional development. You know, facilities, and, and I think that's an important way. I think, I think what we've done in the last couple of years and what we're looking to keep doing, making our buildings better, making our, our fields better, our library, our media room, all of that, I think, enhances the quality of, of experiences for, for all of our kids and even, even our, our staff. So I, I think keeping going with, with that is, is another way. We've mentioned it before, I'll say it again, clubs, activities, things of that nature, enhance the quality of experience for our kids. And, you know, just continuing to support our staff, I, I'm very proud of the recent contract renewals that we did with the staff. I think we showed how much we value our teachers and our staff in, in the raises and, and support that we gave there, so I'm proud of that, and just, you know, keep, keep that going. Thank you.
Exactly, agreed with everything he said, because I was part of that, yes. So what I think, with respect to our teachers, as I said before, I do check in to make sure that morale is good, and from what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that our teachers are excited about the things that we're doing in, in the, in the schools and how we support them. I also think that, of course, professional development, I've already said that, is key, and also celebrating their wins and how great they are. My daughter, who has now finished med school and is in her first year of residency in a plastic surgery program at, in Ohio, speaks very highly of the math teachers she had in her AP courses. They have won... speaks very highly of the math teachers she had in her AP courses. They have now retired. But she has said, Mom, they were phenomenal for me. Really got her where she was in her biochemistry major as Magnum cum laude. And so here we are, all these years later, and then my son now at Howard University. So we have great teachers, and they need to be celebrated on the successes. When their students go out, those students need to come back and present how some, how their work helped to inspire their next. And also, we are doing it with having our teachers do, our teachers are, are doing little snippets at the board meetings. You will see how they are working with the students in the classroom and implementing the programs that we have in place. So they are great, and so are our students. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we will have, each candidate will have the opportunity to deliver a one-minute closing statement. And as was agreed earlier, we will start from the beginning. Mr. Casson?
Very good. Well, first off, thank you to the PTA and the Women's League of Voters for, for hosting tonight. I appreciate it. And Ms. Halloran, for all the hard work she put into this. As I said in my opening, I am running on my six-year record of productivity and success. At this point, you know what you have with me in this role. I believe my time in this position has shown that I am an action-oriented person who has the ability and the will to move this district forward with a clear vision. I believe I've also demonstrated that I have the right temperament, collaborative spirit, work ethic, and integrity to do, do this job well. So if you feel like this district is on the right track, then keeping me in place should make sense. If you don't, then don't feel that way. I would understand if you felt you needed to take your vote elsewhere. I am seeking one more term so that I can see through the current strategic plan to its end and help complete the current capital improvement projects that are in flight. I would also like to utilize my experience and knowledge to help shape the new strategic plan before, before I move on. I don't plan on running after this. I think it's good to have experience on the board, but I think at some point, it's good to have turnover as well. So this would be my last term. Thank you for your time and your attention this afternoon, this evening, I'm sorry, and I humbly request a vote on May 16th. Thank you.
In my first term, much of my advocacy work has come to fruition, and our students are the better for it. Our students have now been accepted to great colleges and universities such as Villanova, MIT, Princeton, Howard, Juilliard, NYU, and Washington University. And our students in the last three years have received almost $7 million in scholarships. I'm an educator who believes that the culture, educational program, and support services must be informed and sensitive to the students' bodies' social and emotional needs so that each student is fully present and engaged in learning. Further instructional excellence must be the norm, and each instructional team member must be committed to professional mastery and supported in a way that allows for its development and demonstration. Leadership makes a difference. That is why we must continue our progress. Therefore, I'm running to retain my seat on the board to continue the work that, the great work that we do here in Toccoho for our students.
So there's a saying above us here in the auditorium, and I want the camera to pick it up for our audience at home. It reads, "Knowledge planted in youth giveth shade in old age." Knowledge is the most important thing we can give our children because knowledge falls under many umbrellas. For anyone that knows me well, no matter what I take on in life, I always give it 110%. I am persistent, and persistent always prevails. I persevere, and I overcome. I'll always do my best to make sure the children of Toccoho come out winning. Together, we are safer, smarter, and stronger. And I will do my best to represent the students and parents of Toccoho. Thank you.
It has been a pleasure answering your thoughtful questions tonight. In closing, I would like to assure voters of my commitment to ensuring the Toccoho Union Free School District continues to lead the way in coming years. Toccoho is a wonderful place to raise a family, and I am fully invested in this district and keeping my children here. If elected, I will have a child in or entering every school in the district by the end of this term. I have been an active member of the PTA and volunteer at various events as much as possible. Volunteering has given me a unique perspective on the amazing things Toccoho has to offer, as well as what could improve. I am running for board trustee because of my passion, dedication, experience, and interests in helping Toccoho continue improving its programming, policies, safety protocols, diversity, inclusiveness, extracurriculars, resources, and staffing for the benefit of every student in the district while maintaining fiscal responsibility. I will work hard to be an asset to the board, keeping the best interests of every student and taxpayer at the forefront of decision-making. Thank you all again for this opportunity.
Okay, and I thank you. I want to thank the candidates, the PTA, and to the community for supporting this event. And please remember to vote on May 16th, and...